It is six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting of Town Council. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rural call, please.
Sure. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember McCafferty?
Present.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
I heard him. Councilmember Grinell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
And Mayor Miller is absent. Town Attorney McGuire is present remotely.
Okay. Introductions, presentations, and proclamations. I'm going to go first with the presentation and recognition to Dave, Paula, Nathaniel, and Wyatt Pizinger for their volunteer hours at the nine eleven memorial site. Could you guys please join me in the front? Okay, so this is a bit of a lengthy read, but I am going to get through it because there's no way to shorten it. I'm so glad you guys are here. Nathaniel and Wyatt Pizinger moved to Chino Valley in May of two thousand and eighteen from the Antelope Valley in California. At ten years old, ten years old and seven, both boys joined the local four-H club where service above self was instilled in them. They were involved in many projects, but nothing sparked their passion as much as shooting sports projects. There they established themselves as quite the marksmen. In the four-H community Nathaniel was number one in the state and held that honor for three years in a row. With disciplines of long-range, twenty-two long-range rifles, scope and peep, twenty-two long-range pistols, and twenty-two twelve-gauge shotgun, this accomplishment had never been done before or since by a member of the four-H program. Wyatt has also found great success in his four-H shooting sports endeavors as a beginner four-H marksman. Along with four-H, they also joined the American Trap Shooting Association, also known as ATA, where they excelled at American-style trap-shooting disciplines. I can go on for a long time on this one. I'm going to read just another paragraph. Upon moving to Arizona, the boys joined the Scholastic Clay Target Program so that they may have the chance to meet new friends and be part of a team. There Nathaniel found that he would be able to earn his high school letter upon completing several tasks, one of which was community service, civic involvement. With that Nathaniel set out to find a volunteering experience that would suit himself and beliefs. His family found the nine eleven memorial project on Facebook for the city of Chino Valley town. They attended their first workday and gave a hundred percent and continue to do so each and every time they show up for a workday. Nathaniel and Wyatt have only missed one workday due to being out of town for a competition. Okay, so the accolades on these gentlemen go on for four more paragraphs of all the different awards they have won. The reason this family, obviously, they've been out every workday except for the one working on the nine eleven memorial project, there's their picture up there on the screen, with the support of their parents. And we highlight Chino Valley youth often, and it's usually in conjunction with at our, our high school and our sports teams, but these gentlemen, I believe, and council believes deserve recognition as well as their parents. So with that being said, we have Wyatt, this is for you. Yes. Nathaniel, this is for you. Paula, this is for you. And Dad, I'm just going to read yours real quick. Certificate of Award may be known that this certificate has been presented to Dave Pizinger for Outstanding Achievement Volunteer Hours at the nine eleven memorial site, Chino Valley, Arizona. That is for you. I know Grandpa had a big part in it also. I just want to say thank you guys, your blessing to our town, and we really appreciate all the work that you did. And we're honored to have you here in Chino. Would you guys like to say anything? Who wants to talk?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
Thank you.
Okay, up next we have a presentation by Corey Christian with the, see, look, here we go. Getting old. Presentation by Corey Christian with the County Library Network regarding their annual contributions and how the county and municipalities work together.
All right, we are good to go. Thank you, Vice Mayor Perkins, members of the council. I appreciate you taking the time to hear a little bit about the library district today. So, library district has been around, sir, how do I advance? The library district has been around since nineteen eighty-seven, serving the, the citizens of Yavapai County in, in many capacities, which I'll get into today. So the library district itself is, has the same Board of Supervisors as the Board of Directors for the library district. So it is a separate governing authority under the state of Arizona, but also your Board of Supervisors are also your Board of Directors. And we have with us here today Chairman Brown, who is chairman of the Board of Directors for the library district, as he is for the County Board of Supervisors. So libraries, in order to be a part of the library district, have to apply to become an affiliate, which Chino Valley did so long ago, it was decades ago. So you've been an affiliate with the library district probably since the very beginning. And it's also funded through property taxes, which is fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents per hundred thousand dollars of assessed valuation. So the taxpayers in Yavapai County do directly pay for the library district through its own property tax assessment. So the library district has core values of service professionalism, responsibility, and leadership. With our mission is to provide library materials and services to meet the informational, cultural, and recreational needs of all residents of Yavapai County through our branch libraries, our affiliates, such as the Chino Valley Public Library, and through the Yavapai Library Network. So one of the biggest ways we assist the patrons and libraries throughout Yavapai County is through the Yavapai Library Network, which is very unique to Yavapai County. We have the largest library consortium by far in the state. Nobody even comes close. So we have fifty-six libraries throughout the county that participate. These are public libraries, college/university libraries, and school libraries that all, and archival libraries that all take part in, in this partnership. So a total of twenty-five governing authorities participate, and we have agreements with every one of them. So what we do is we provide an online catalog. So if you want to find a good book to read, you know, what's the latest John Grisham novel, you can go to catalog.yln.info, select Chino Valley Public Library, or just go to their website, do a search for your books, place it on hold, and you get those, those items delivered to your library regardless of where they're found in the state, in the county. So if Sedona has that library, we courier it right on over to Chino Valley. You can go pick it up, and you may not even know that it came from Sedona, or Ashfork, or the Humboldt Unified School District, whichever library happens to have that particular item. We also provide RFID, so that's radio frequency identification. So in the back of each book is a tag, square tag, that tells the system, basically, its barcode number, and it can scan it. And with that technology, we can do security coming in and out of the library. We can, we have an automated materials handling system, which you see there on the right, that automatically sorts books to which location that book is going through for our transit system. We also provide tech, technical support. We provide cataloging services, central sorting, which I mentioned. And overall, we share three hundred thousand items a year between our fifty-six libraries in the consortium. So if you think about that, if each one of those books is valued at even ten dollars, I mean, there's three, three million dollars that we're saving just by working together. And you can drop your books off at any library. So if your kid goes to Chino Valley High School, you don't want to drop it off because you're busy, give it to your kid. Or if your kid is busy, they can dump it off at the public library. Or if you work in Prescott, you can dump it off at the Prescott Public Library, and it will always find its way back home. So any one of those locations, those books can be dropped off at. We also provide direct library services to Yavapai County citizens. We have fifteen rural branches that we run, plus two incorporated areas, which is Dewey-Humboldt and Clarkdale. We run their library as well. And we provide books, ultra-high-definition movies, video games, DVDs, audiobooks, e-materials, and more, depending on what it is you want. And if there's something we don't have, let us know, we'll get it for you, and place it on hold for you and have it shipped to your library. We also do notaries, programming, and computer usage at our rural branch libraries. We also support municipal libraries in the form of Overdrive, which is how you get your eBooks. So if you're reading something on your phone, your tablet, your computer, Overdrive is our platform for delivering that to you at no cost. We also do universal class, which is online learning, Mango Languages, and again, I mentioned the courier service, which Scott Bruner is your courier service. He goes to our central sorting facility and picks up your books on a daily basis and delivers them to your library. We also provide representation at a state level with the state library and with other organizations as well. We give over one point eight million dollars in direct funding to our municipal libraries. One hundred and four thousand of that is going to the Chino Valley Public Library. I put CBCL, that's wrong, Chino Valley Public Library. So how do we come up with this amount of a hundred and four thousand dollars? Well, it, it does get to be kind of complex because we're trying to make sure that each municipality gets a fair amount. And this is how we define what's fair. So there's a standard amount of nine percent, that's fixed. Out of the hundred and sixty, or one point six million dollars, nine percent of that is, goes to each municipal library based on a fixed amount. Five percent goes based on population, fifty percent based on assessed valuation, twenty percent based on how the libraries circulate, ten percent for active patrons, and six percent for items. So that's how we determine which libraries get what portion of that one point six seven five million. So the way that breaks out for you is the hundred and four thousand, out of that nine percent, the total that gets divided amongst the library for that one category is a hundred and fifty thousand. So sixteen thousand of that amount goes to the Chino Valley Public Library. Seven thousand goes based on population, five percent, forty thousand based on assessed valuation, eighteen thousand based on circulation, et cetera, et cetera, all adding up to a total of one hundred and four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-six cents. So this is what your contribution has been since FY sixteen seventeen. You can see that it was at a hundred and ten thousand and steadily kept going down. And the reason for that is, is those performance factors that I mentioned before, over half the weight right now is assessed valuation. So as Sedona's property values go up, Prescott Valley's property values go up, if they're going up at a greater percentage than other municipalities, they're going to start to get a larger and larger piece of the pie. So what we actually did is we lowered the amount of, that items, books are worth, and we increased the standard amount. So that's why it's leveled off and not continued to decrease, which also helped Camp Verdi, and it helped Jerome and Clarkdale and Dewey-Humboldt as well. So if, if my math here or these numbers are incorrect, I'm sure Scott Bruner will visit me tonight and bludgeon me. He knows where I live, so. But looking at your documents online, it looked like you had about four hundred thousand dollars for your library budget. The total YFL, YCFLD contribution is a hundred and four thousand. Out of that hundred and four thousand, we take about ten thousand out to pay for the automation system and to pay for the RFID system. So rather than giving you a check and then sending you a bill so you can give us a check back, we just take that nine thousand, nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen out of your contribution and send you ninety-four thousand, five hundred and thirty, which has to go to offsetting your library costs. That's the only thing that it can go for. So looking at your library budget of four hundred thousand, under that formula, about a quarter of it is funded through the library district. And here's my contact information if you have any questions, which I can answer right now or later on.
Any questions? No? Okay, is photo op time?
All right, Vice Mayor Perkins, here is your big check for one hundred four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-six cents. Got to add the cents in there, right?
Send the bill to Mac, actually. I have mobile deposit.
Nice. Take, you should try that and see what happens.
No, I'd rather not. And thank you Chairman Brown. Okay, moving on down the line, presentation of Business of the Quarter to Chino Rentals by the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce. Lorette Breschere.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lorette Breschere with the Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here with our board members, Max Bloodsoe, our board president, and Rhonda Smith, our past chairman. We are here to present Business of the Quarter. This is a long overdue for you guys. We are so ecstatic to present this to Chino Rentals. Thank you so much for everything you do for our community. Thank you for everything you do for the town of Chino Valley, and thank you for all you do for the Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce. So we would like to present this to you, Adam.
We've been here for forty years. We like to be a part of Chino. Anyway, we can help out. We don't do a whole lot. We, we provide a lot of stuff, but you guys do all the legwork. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. So we're ecstatic to present that award to you guys on behalf of all of us here. Thank you.
And yes, Chino Rentals does do a lot, other than provide things. Thank you. Okay, D, introduction and presentation of the Town of Chino Valley New Employee Hires. Laura?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. So the last time I was before you presenting new hires was probably seven months ago. Since then, we have onboarded eleven new hires. Instead of having them come to the meeting, just to kind of minimize the number of employ, or people in this room, we've presented you with a PowerPoint presentation once, once again. So let's start from the beginning. How do I, there we go. So Sarah Burchill, you probably recognize Sarah. She's the Senior Administrative Technician in the Town Manager's Office, and her hire date was March thirty-first of this year. Joseph Peray, who is a roads maintenance worker in the Public Works Department, onboarded with us on April twelfth. Joseph Vinuck, who's also a road maintenance worker in the Public Works Department, onboarded with us on May tenth. Marie Weiss, who is a part-time clerk in the Library Community Services. Her date of hire was May seventeenth. Joan Dwyer, you recognize, our presiding magistrate, started with us on July first in the municipal court. David Shalins is a parks maintenance worker in the Community Services Department, who onboarded with us on July twelfth. Matthew Green, Fleet Supervisor in the Public Works Department, onboarded on July nineteenth. A lot of action in public works going on. Beth Ann Hang, a planner, you may have met her already at one of the planning and zoning or Town Council meetings, part of the Development Services Department. She started with us on August twenty-third. Stephen Boner, another Public Works Department Road Maintenance Worker, start, started with us on August thirtieth. And I am going to hand off the mic to Cindy Blackmore.
All right, good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. So once again, I am here to introduce Ms. Lori Lineberry, whom you know she has started with us as an interim Development Services Director. Well, I am very pleased to announce tonight that Lori has accepted the official position as our new Development Services Director, and we are so excited to have her here with us. She comes to us with forty-one years of experience. She's worked for cities and counties in California, Washington, and Arizona. The last twenty-one years were in Yuma, with thirteen of those as the Director of Community Development. So she brings a lot to the table for us, and we're really excited about that. She has a Bachelor's of Science in, in Urban Planning from Cal State Polytechnic University Pomona. That was a lot to say there. And she also has a Master's of Public Administration from the Consortium of California State Universities. So we're very happy to have someone of her caliber and experience with us. I am looking forward to the great things that she's going to do for us and things that she's already done. I'm very proud of her. And I know she's going to be a positive influence on the development of our town. So with that, I would like to present Lori.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. I was only supposed to be here for like three months, and after spending a little bit of time with the staff and my boss and my peers, decided I just couldn't leave. There was just, there's too much to do, there's too much good, and everybody's really trying to do the right thing. And you don't usually get that kind of combination in a community. So I just felt like it was really a good fit. So I'm, I'm thrilled that I was asked to stay, and I look forward to helping, helping the place change however the place needs to change.
Thank you. Thank you. I actually, I asked Cindy, why, why can't she just stay? Can't we just keep her? Why won't she just stay? So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. All right, moving right down to Call to the Public.
Call to the Public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for Call to the Public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Individuals who wish to speak, please state your first and last name, and if you reside in Chino Valley town limits. And we will start with Mr. Todd Leeg.
Good evening, Council. My name is Todd Leeg, and I pastor Word of Life Church here in Chino Valley. And, but tonight I'm here more speaking as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Part of our responsibility as the board is spelled out in the bylaws that were written by council before I've been, before I came on the board, and that's, I've been on the board, I don't know, six, seven, eight years, something like that. And one of our, one of our, one of the mandates in there is that, on our board is that staff is a resource. They have voice, but no vote. Well, this past Thursday at our monthly meeting, our board was informed that the, the mud run has been canceled. And that decision was made unilaterally by staff without any input from the board, or from any citizens, or from what I can ascertain after talking with a couple of you, without council input either. And my, that's my issue tonight, is that this has become a pattern over the last three years, that staff is making more and more decisions that in actuality, according to the Prab Board bylaws, are things that the board is supposed to do. One being, as an example, is that every year, we're to make a presentation to you, the council, about short-term priorities and long-term priorities and budgets, and the successes and the failures that happened on that year. Over the last three years, that has not happened, and it has been taken on by, by staff. We have not had any put, input. Citizens have no input on, on budgetary items. Our first meeting back after all the COVID nonsense, we were handed a schedule, these are the events, and here's the budget, and this is what's done. And, and so I, 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 I have issue with the fact that we're not even following our own policy and, and procedures. The issue tonight is the Chino Mudder, the mud run. And, and it was created by, and it was physically built by and run by the members of the board and the citizens of this town, vastly our, our, our nonprofits, whether it was Lions or churches, or, and, and a lot of our businesses who sponsored each of the twenty-two obstacles. And so we had all of this unity and people working together, but in that unilateral decision, not one of those persons or individuals or businesses were, had any kind of conversation or any kind of input. And so just on, on, just as for numbers, it takes seventy-five to a hundred volunteers day of the event, just to run the event. And that's, doesn't include all the other things that happen with the park staff and, and, and all of that. But, but my, my point is, is that things have changed, and I know things have changed because of COVID and all of that, but we have not been, over the last three years, have not been following our own policy and procedure. I had a meeting well over a year ago with, with our, our board, and with former Town Manager, and with Mayor Miller. He was not even the mayor yet. He was a mayor-elect, but he was, he came to the meeting. And, and this was the issue. The issue was, is that they were trying to shrink the size of the Parks and Recreation Board, and to also kind of do away with any kind of input. And so then this last, just a couple of weeks ago, I sat down with, with Manager Blackmore and with, with Mayor Miller again, and, and we just talked about some things that I, that were issues for me, and, and I was given some answers, but I don't even, you know, it was, again, it was staff. Now we have a unilateral decision. So, so I'm just asking that this, that you as the council would look into the fact as to why we're not following our own policies and procedures. Why was, why was this allowed to happen? And, and I just appreciate the time.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Perkins, his time is up. Would you like to continue?
That's fine. I'm done. I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor Todd.
Next we have Floyd Dugan.
Council members, my name is Floyd Dugan. I live on Center Street, twelve fifty West Center Street. I'm here in opposition of the rezoning of twelve acres to, right now it's ten homes on the twelve acres. We go from one acre zoning down to, I believe it's point one six acre. I, we've been here for twenty years. It was a great place to come to. Moved from Tucson here. Used to go to bed at night and listen to the diesel pump and irrigation up away from us, and including Molly Ray, there was farming in there. Now we're, I understand growth, I really do, but putting it in a residential area is what we've had there for so long. I think we need to reconsider some of that. That's where I'm at. Thank you, folks, for listening.
Thank you.
And next we have Alex Harris.
Vice Mayor, Council, my name is Alex Harris. I live at thirteen fifty West Center Street. I also oppose the proposed change in zoning. Beyond that, I believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission has lost direction. I researched their directive I researched their directives and it appears to me that their recommendations violate their directives. I would ask the council to investigate that and to look into it. I also object to this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins, those are the only speaker cards I have. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak that did not fill one out?
Okay, we are going to move on to current event and summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. Status report by mayor and council regarding current events. We're here?
Sure. So this past weekend, we had a great turnout for our youth football at the Chino Valley High School. Not high school football, youth football, Chino Valley Youth and Cheer. And we, we did the nine eleven tribute for all the teams, the minors, the majors and the mighty mites. It was a great turnout, a lot of pride out there and they represented very well. Also, we had a fundraiser for Kevin Garcia. He's suffering from cancer. So if you Facebook Cowboy Kevin, you can send him prayers or any which way you can help out for the little guy that's in need. Thank you.
No? I would like to say the video of the teams doing the nine eleven tribute, the little football players and the cheerleaders, it was amazing. It was beautiful. It was beautiful and you guys really outdid yourself on that one. It was incredible. You outdid soccer. All I have really was the nine eleven memorial ceremony this weekend was incredible. It was absolutely incredible and I was grateful to be there and grateful for everybody's participation and in attendance and I'm just honored to be in Chino Valley for something of that magnitude on the twentieth anniversary. It was just great. And Matt did a great job. We had some audio interference and he kind of chopped it up a little bit and that is posted on the town's Facebook page and I'm not sure if it's on the town website yet or not. It will be tomorrow. Oh, and it's on YouTube. So I would highly recommend checking that out. It's awesome. And I believe that is all I have.
Vice Mayor Perkins, can we just double check with Councilmember Armstrong?
I'm sorry, Tom, I, do you have anything for current memories updates?
No, I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council members. Just wanted to mention a couple of things and I know you've already touched on the nine eleven, but some, we had some very successful events over the last few weeks. And first off, our territorial days, such an amazing community event. There was really a great turnout. You know, you could walk around and see people enjoying themselves, enjoying the sense of community. And so I wanted to mention that one as well as our nine eleven memorial ceremony. Again, very well attended. It was a wonderful tribute. You could tell everyone put a lot of thought and effort into that and to be able to celebrate those that were lost and have that remembrance was, was a wonderful event. So they were successful events and I just want to thank the staff that put all the time and effort that went into that as well as all the volunteers and the community people that came together to make this happen. We are very lucky as a town to have all the community members who volunteer all their time and give to the town to make these things successful. It's such a wonderful partnership and just wanted to reiterate how important these things are to our community and how important the volunteers and all of the staff time that goes into making these events happen. So that's it. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. How could I forget territorial days? That was incredible. All right. Moving on to consent agenda, all those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anybody like to remove anything over here? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items five A, five B, five C, five D and five E as written and proposed.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Consent agenda passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
I'm always like, I'm used to making the motions. So I'm like, who's going to make?